This meeting is being held in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6 at sec, notice of which was sent to the record and the Star Ledger and was posted on the municipal bulletin board.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Simms is not here. Councilmember Bataclia?
May I?
Here. Would everybody please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And I do have a couple of quick proclamations that I'm going to read. And the first one pertains to, this is Radon Action Month, and it reads, "Whereon radon is a naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the second-leading cause of lung cancer, causing as many as 500 lung cancer deaths annually in New Jersey; and whereas elevated random levels are found in many homes and pose a serious health threat to families residing in these homes; and whereas any home may have high levels of radon even if neighboring homes do not; and whereas radon testing is easy and inexpensive and elevated levels of radon can be effectively reduced at the cost of a typical home repair; and whereas by mitigating homes with radon concentrations at or above 4 PCI/L in New Jersey, 78 lives could be saved annually." Now therefore I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with the members of the City Council and residents of the City of Hackensack, do hereby proclaim the month of January 2018 as Radon Action Month in the City of Hackensack and call upon all residents who have not yet tested to test their homes for radon and to reduce radon levels, F-elevated levels are found, to protect their families from serious health risk of radon. We're looking into the possibility of getting some grant money or hooking up with the county who used to give out the free kits, and you'd probably be able to pick them up here. It's an easy test to do, radon test your home, and if you don't want to do that, their kits are available. I think Home Depot and Lowe's sells them. It's a pretty easy test, doesn't take long, and it's not that expensive. And as it stated, radon, you know, based on that number, about 78 people from New Jersey probably die per year due to radon poisoning, or lung cancer caused by radon poisoning. So... And the next proclamation reads, "Whereas all children in the City of Hackensack should have access to the highest quality education possible, and whereas the City of Hackensack recognizes the important role that an effective education plays in preparing all students in the City of Hackensack to be successful adults; and whereas quality education is critically important to the economic vitality of the City of Hackensack; and whereas the City of Hackensack is home to a multitude of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children in addition to families who educate their children in the home; and whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy but also enhances the vibrancy of our community; and whereas the City of Hackensack has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children; whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the county by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness of the need for effective educational options." Now therefore I, John P. LaBrosse Jr., Mayor of the City of Hackensack, along with members of the Hackensack City Council, do hereby recognize January 21st through January 27th, 2018, as School Choice Week in the City of Hackensack and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Okay?
I'll fix that.
It's supposed to be diversified, right?
Yeah, before it's...
Said diversity, I'm like, wait, that doesn't sound right.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. So I need the approval of the minutes, or motion for the approval of the minutes of the cow and regular meeting of December 5th, 2017? I think we're all here?
You can actually do them both together because you were all, everybody was here.
Okay, so for December 5th and December 21st, the cow and the regular meetings. I need a motion?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is not here. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
May I? Very good. City Manager's Report, please.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. This is the City Manager's Report for January 9th, 2018. Let me start by wishing everybody a Happy New Year. Hopefully it will be well and prosperous for all. Number two, please be advised that city offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Day Jr. observance, which is Monday, January 15th. Snowstorm was well done by our DPW and the sanitation crew. Any complaints that we have received have been handled by the DPW supervisors. Our ultimate goal is to ensure that our roadways remain passable and emergency vehicles can respond to all types of emergencies. Our Code Blue policy has been in effect and was utilized by the City of Hackensack. I had no documentation of how many people took advantage of it, but we were well-prepared and the Code Blue policy was activated. The snow ordinance that we've been working on is almost ready for introduction and should be presented at our next council meeting. Number six is the State and Passaic Street. We are going to add a crossing guard to this intersection because of the engineering change and the design that's present, because children's safety is paramount. The state-street conversion has gone very well. Obviously, we had a little snowstorm, so we removed the cones. We're working on a few punch list items. Obviously, we have some signs that have to be removed. Some of them have to be alternated or reconfigured that makes sense for it, but so far, we've done well with the state-street conversion and seems to be well-adjusted and people seem to be adjusting to it. I'm making the reminder that our Christmas tree collections are every Wednesday in January. Obviously, we'll take that and chip them and turn them into mulch and use them within the city. We had an unfortunate circumstances where the H-pack, we had a pipe burst that occurred yesterday, we had to cancel two programs, the one yesterday that was for jazz and tonight was supposed to be Hamiltons. They will be rescheduled. Staff will meet with the insurance adjuster tomorrow, and we're going to try to get through this, but unfortunately, it happened. It could be worse, not that it was great. Number 10 is that the recycling counters were finished, printed, and mailed to residents. And that would complete the City Manager's Report.
Real quick, the Hamiltons actually did take place tonight. They did move it to the high school.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But they are going to do an additional show, I believe, trying for either January 30th or 31st, I believe, which would be back at the Hack Pack, which would be good. Unfortunately, last night's performance would have been the high school kids and their jazz ensemble, but unfortunately, you know, that incident happened, but that is rescheduled to take place there, so it's important for those kids to be able to use the facility. All right, thank you. Resolution 01-18.
Okay, this is the resolution that was for final adoption of the ordinance number 41-2017?
Right.
It was tabled at the last meeting?
And we're going to continue tabling it.
So it's going to stay tabled?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Resolution 2-18.
This is a resolution for the final adoption of ordinance number 44-2017, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to modify the streets listed in Section 56, One-Way Streets. This ordinance has been advertised pursuant to law and now calls for a public hearing.
I have a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Anybody who'd like to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only, please come forward.
I'm not sure that what I have to say pertains to this, but if it's about one-way streets, why was Elm Avenue ever made a one-way street? It really clogs up things right on that Main Street Avenue going north, and there's no outlet at all. There never was heavy traffic there on Elm to make it a one-way. It was done for some reason, I don't know, but every once in a while, you could slip up there and it was a relief for that little clog there going north on Main Street. So if that pertains to this ordinance about one-way streets...
This is really not germane to the matter at hand here. This should be in the three minutes for your regular session.
You're more than welcome to speak about that in the public comment session.
Okay, I'm sorry.
This is only on this ordinance.
I'm sorry, but if you would keep that in mind, I would really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else on this ordinance?
Was the true way codified? I mean, that's what's going on now. I don't know about the one-way streets. What, how many are on the one-way streets? How many, how many streets are on this one-way? Because we don't, our little thing doesn't tell us all this. How many one-way streets?
It's just removing State Street from the list, that's all.
Yeah.
Oh, just removing one? Okay, because you know, we have to codify, I'll tell you later what we have to do. It hasn't been done.
Yes, just about to remove a...
Tell you later.
...State Street from Moore to Essex. Anybody else on this ordinance? Seeing done, motion to close to the public?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is not here. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
May I?
I need a motion to adopt.
Need a motion to adopt the ordinance is...
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
May I?
Aye.
Be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Hackensack, County of Bergen, and State of New Jersey that ordinance number 44-2017 has passed its second and final reading and is hereby adopted.
Thank you. Resolution 3-18.
This is a resolution for the introduction of ordinance number 1-2018, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Code of the City of Hackensack, Vehicles and Traffic, to add and remove certain bus stops within the City of Hackensack.
Need a motion, please?
Open to the public?
No. It's an introduction.
It's an introduction, okay. Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the above ordinance, being ordinance 1-2018, is introduced, does now pass on first reading, and that said ordinance shall be considered for final passage at a meeting to be held on January 23rd, 2018, at 8:00 PM or soon thereafter, if the matter can be reached, at the regular meeting place of the City Council, and that such time and place or person is interested, be given an opportunity to be heard concerning said ordinance; and that the city clerk bein', she is hereby authorized and directed to publish said ordinance according to law with a notice of its introduction and passage on first reading, and of the time and place when and where said ordinance will be further considered for final passage.
All right, thank you. Just for the public's knowledge, and it was done at the earlier session, the introduction of this ordinance is about the bus stops pertaining to the Main Street area, Main Street and State Street and Moore Street, how they're all being taken off of Main Street and being relocated. There's, I can't remember how many, quite a few, though.
Fifty-nine total.
Fifty-nine total. So our engineer gave a report on this earlier, and a very detailed report. He's been working very closely with New Jersey Transit, and they've approved all these new spots and stops moving forward, so that's what this is about. Okay, resolution 4-18.
A resolution authorizing tax refunds for State Board judgments, tax sale, and tax sale premium.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 5-18.
A resolution authorizing the transfer of the 2017 budget appropriation reserves.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 6-18.
This is a resolution awarding extraordinary unspecifiable services contract to LKS Associates to serve as consultant for the new Hackensack Performing Arts Center.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
May I? Resolution 7-18.
A resolution to replace resolution number 439-17, authorizing the City of Hackensack to enter into a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres Program, from the project titled Green Acres Project, number 0223-17-028, which is for Fishine Park.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 8-18.
This is a resolution authorizing the City of Hackensack to enter into a Bergen County Trust Fund project contract with the County of Bergen for the purpose of using a matching grant award from the 2016 funding round of the Bergen County Open Space Recreation Flood Plane Protection, Farmland and Historic Preservation Trust Fund Municipal Park Improvement Program, which is for Carver Park.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 9-18.
This is a resolution authorizing approval of petty cash fund.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 10-18.
A resolution for authorization of the adoption of a cash management plan, including designation of approved depositories.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 11-18.
A resolution authorizing the 2018 temporary budget.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 12-18.
This is a resolution authorizing change orders for DMR architecture for M&amp;M Building Renovation Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 13-18.
A resolution authorizing accrued time payout of $103,111.13 to Anthony Sadida, who is the Assistant DPW Superintendent.
Need a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution, excuse me, 14-18.
This is a resolution authorizing award of contract for engineering services for Boswell McClave for Main Street North Streetscape Project.
May I have a motion, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 15-18.
A resolution authorizing the establishment of a reserve for preliminary expenses for the Main Street South Streetscape Project.
Need a motion, please?
Offer. Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Resolution 16-18.
This is a resolution authorizing payment of bills.
Need a motion to pay the bills, please?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Okay, moving into the consent agenda, does anybody have any conflicts with the consent agenda? Only five items on it. Okay. Onward.
Following items are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any item requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda, and consent agenda items will be reflected in full in the minutes, including any exceptions and/or deletions. The consent agenda consists of Resolution 17-18, resolution authorizing the municipal tax collector to process the cancellation of tax funds and delinquencies of less than $10 during the 2018 calendar year. Resolution number 18-18 is a resolution authorizing the governing body to fix the rate of interest to be charged for non-payment of taxes, taxes assessments, and other municipal charges for the 2018 calendar year. Resolution 19-18 is a resolution authorizing the municipal tax collector to conduct an accelerated tax lien sale during the 2018 calendar year. Resolution 20-18 is a resolution authorizing the reappointment for boards and commissions. And Resolution 21-18 is a resolution authorizing the rejection of all bids for the elevator addition to the emergency operations center.
Need a motion to accept the consent agenda as it was read?
Offer.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Okay. With that, I need a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer. Second.
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Simms is absent. Councilmember Bataclia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrosse?
Aye. Okay, anybody from the public would like to speak, please come forward. We will have three minutes. Give your name and address to the clerk, please, as well.
I'll be like Kathy, Larry Eisen, Hackensack. Just a quick question. In previous years, the calendar we got from the city not only included garbage dates, but it included a full calendar with...
Are they still out there?
All the committee dates, the city council dates, zoning board, planning board, and all that. This year, it seems to have thinned down and only includes pickup dates, and I'm wondering why, because I found it very convenient to have a single source for all the dates of all the committees that run this town, city. End of question.
I'm deferring to the city manager.
I'm going to start with the concept, and I, this is going to come across as smart or curt, but I'm not, it's the recycling calendar. That's what it was titled, and that's the purpose of it. Every, and I've only been, well, I could have used the word, I've been here a short time, but every time...
Not anymore, baby. Now it falls on you.
I understand. Every time we make any change, it's never right. So I, because unfortunately, everybody wants everything to be as it serves their needs or purpose. Unfortunately, I've made this suggestion, when we changed it last year, it wasn't right. So far, I'm two-for-two that people don't change. So I'll make the premise that I will go back and include those calendar dates in 2019, but I will, I will memorialize this moment, that that won't be good enough either, because every time that there's a change on this calendar or purpose, it's never meets the needs of somebody thinks that I should have done more or less. Not to mention the cost of this calendar...
No, I understand that, but part of the purpose of our easily accessible calendar is to get more citizens out to participate in these various events. And instead of calling it a recycling calendar, why don't we just call it a municipal calendar and include all the events we'd like the public to come and attend? Just seems logical to me, so I throw that out as a suggestion.
Okay. 2019, we'll go back to the municipal calendar.
There is a list of council meeting dates on the table.
And how many people have access to it?
Well, I'm just telling you it's there and it's on the website.
All this information is posted on the website.
Then you're out of luck.
Sarah?
One question I do have on ordinance 318 about the moving of bus stops. If you, State Street now is two ways, and it's brutal now with the buses now, because they don't know how to park next to a curb. You can't go around them no more because it's two ways. And sometimes there's a caravan of buses, because there's so many people using those buses, there's two or three buses following each other. But that's, now you're going to tell me, you're going to move 59 places on Main Street, they have to go to Moore or Street, and you tell people why you're building those apartments on Main Street? Because when they go out of the door, they can get right in the bus and go to work. So now you're going to tell them, they got to walk a block in either direction...
No, no, no.
And hope there's a spot there.
There's other, there's buses on, near the corners, on the cross streets, by Main Street, but they won't be, the buses will not be traveling on Main Street. They'll be traversing across town, across the streets from State to Moore.
How do they get there?
No, they'll be, well, they'll be State, Moore, and circle around. So they'll, they'll share it.
Okay. Another one I had is...
Can't be any worse than the buses on, on, on Main Street.
Well, when you make that two ways too, that's going to be unbelievable. I couldn't get around them buses either. I see we're having a service contract for the Artro Culture Center. I thought that was the Upper Main Street Alliance's job. I see now we're hiring somebody to do their job.
Well, we're sharing the cost 50/50 with them.
Okay. And underneath 18, we're doing improvements to Carver Park. Why only Carver Park?[1558.12] How much are we going to put money-wise into that park that we haven't already done now for the last two years? We have a lot of other parks that can use upgrading besides Carver Park.
Well, the, the grant was designated for Carver Park, so therefore, I believe so.
Okay. That answered the question. And the other thing, and I did have a question on, would, I agree with the code blue, would Hackensack please go out, find illegal people's freezing, and bring them to a shelter? I don't understand why the same police department cannot be utilized only in Hackensack, that we cannot pick up illegal aliens and bring them to where they need to be brought. I don't see how the police could be used, one way to help people that they don't know are homeless, and not be able to use to pick up people
Is a huge, 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 are we still on time? Mr. Dunn?
He's got twenty-two seconds.
Finish, finish what you have to say, then I'll comment. Thank you.
Okay. That's, that's about all I had.
First and foremost, it's against Attorney General guidelines for our police to even think of doing such a thing. Our police strictly follow the Attorney General guidelines. They are not to check people's citizenship. That's not part of their role as police officers, nor do we want them to be ICE agents or anything of the sort. They have their enough jobs to do. The difference between that and, I don't even see the correlation between that and helping homeless people who are out in the cold. But that said, code blue is a statewide, countywide, now Hackensack-wide policy that we instituted to help people who, you know, unfortunately are out in the cold, and has nothing to do with citizenship, and nor should it. And like I said, our police are not to administer any type of investigation into people's residency in this country. That's not part of their job. Thank you. Next.
Rich Serbo, forty-six Spring Valley Avenue. You know, I just want to welcome the public. I think they are part of everything. And I, I want to apologize tonight for being maybe a little too critical or harsh, even to the council, and maybe I should be more euphemistic with my words. So to the public, my apologies, and to the council, I apologize for maybe the past few months, and I'll be more euphemistic, okay? But saying that, I certainly don't want to not get at the truth. So let's start with the truth. Medicare has reprimanded the hospital? That's a tip of the iceberg. No one wants to go deeper and find out the real problem there. So, John, I'm telling you, I told you the truth, I sent you documents, you don't want to hear it. Now, let's wait, let's move on. Redevelopment, okay? The frenzy about redevelopment is fine. I'm okay with that. Wonderful. But let's make sure the public knows that you're going to move out working-class people, you're going to disrupt them, and move in more money, more affluence, and hey, see you later, okay? It's happens, it happens all over the country. It's, it's disguised in the words of development, and you get away with just saying how wonderful that is. But working class class people should be on notice that they've got to leave, okay? Because rents will go up, property owners downtown don't want them there, and it's an ethnic thing, too, okay? So, John, be truthful. It's wonderful to have redevelopment, but the truth is, the truth
That is truthful, I agree with that.
Okay? The truth is, working-class people need to hit the road, find another place to live, you
Could disagree more, but go ahead.
Okay. But it's, it's Hackensack, John. It's not
And your statistics are based on what?
Look, you, you want me to bring more documents in for you?
Statistics are based on what?
They're, they're based on redevelopment all over the country, everywhere. It's happening everywhere. If you want proof in documents, I'll bring them to you and send them to you, okay? It's the truth. And, and so, it's, it, John, it's not Montclair. I know you want it to be Montclair or Ridgewood, okay? It's Hackensack, okay? You've got to deal with the diversity here, and working-class people represent a large segment here, and, okay? All right, it's not Glen Rock, John, all right? You know, you might want to shop over there, and I've seen you shopping in other towns. You don't even shop in Hackensack, so
Oh, that's so far from the truth.
No, no, look, it's, it's not Ridgewood, okay?
Your time is up, sir.
Everybody wants it to be Ridgewood, or, come on, all right?
Thank you. Next, please.
Yeah, beat the clock, you have to go fast forward. Kathleen Salvo, forty-seven Loder Street, Hackensack, New Jersey. Mr. Sims wasn't here before, but we had a presentation about open space and everything else, and they should see the M and M building, that's a hundred percent land coverage. And also, to appropriate any more money for that building is ridiculous, because it's costing us over eight million dollars now. We all said we don't need to see a citizen portion of it, so we should forget about it. Big problems at the early education building. It's really a disaster. Somebody's going to get really, very hurt. We need to put more, the way they cross between the streets, you gave them a crossing guard, but they still in the middle of the street, they cross behind the cars, it's just an accident waiting to happen. And I did talk to the snow removal people, and they're going to get rid of some more of the snow for us on the corner, because it does hinder the bus from turning. We have, we have to, you created such a bad problem down there. You have to help, you have to help that area more. It has to be squeaky-clean like Main Street. The curbs have to be clean, the corners have to be clean. And the crossing guard has to have more clout, he has to make the walk course at the corner. They can't go behind cars, cars. They're walking in the middle of the street, and as we just heard from Pete before, when they have a funeral there, there's no place for the, for the funeral people to park, and we try to open up some of that M and M lot until they start doing the other thing. And open space is not a thing in Hackensack. That's that. The article in the paper, I said at the count meeting, I'll say it again, it was disgusting, it didn't even reflect what happened. It's not a federal lawsuit, it was, it's a civil lawsuit. And that, and to say that, and one of our desk workers left us, and this is ridiculous. The reporter should get more information before he writes any kind of articles to this. And it was disgruntled employees that didn't want to work, and they, they fabricated some charges against people for a suit. I mean, the word suit is used, it's because you want to make money. You don't sue your boss. This is, this is all bogus, and it's a shame that they have to muddle this, this man's character. The calendar, I agree. I mean, you don't want Peter to pay pool, we want, it's a bridge version. A calendar's supposed to have dates and months, and we always had it, like, like my friend said. And it had the planning board when it met, it had the zoning board when it met, it had the city council meetings when it met, and we did refer to it. And we don't always go to, running to the website, because people don't do that, where you look at the calendar. So this thing could have been done on a card, like Loder does. They did, they do a card, and they tell you when the cycling can be done. So we print, we spent all this money, well, I guess all these people that supported it did. We mailed it to the houses, this was Ruth's idea a couple of years ago, to have the, have the map, that's a good idea, and with no calendar, it's no, a calendar is days and months. A bridge version? I don't know. But we do have, we do have recycling things if, if that happens. What else had to happen? I'll talk to you later about two things in private that we have to talk about. We just have to do something with, with the safety of, of that, of that area.
Thank you.
Okay? Before something happens.
The city manager's already said, next year, we're going to go back to the old-style calendar. We tried something, didn't work, that's all right, we'll fix it.
I'm not worried about the city and the buildings, Serbo, and I don't think I'll be here that long, but neither will some of the little children trying to get across Munaki Road by Hudson Street. It is a horrible, horrible intersection. You looked, you looked. We need a crossing guard there, and this last snow was absolutely horrendous. Why aren't the cars towed on Washington Avenue when there's four inches of snow? They waited until we had the eight inches, and then came around and talked about, get your car off the street. But that's beside the point. I had to call to get a path covered, shoveled on Munaki Road for the children to be safe. We're not going to have children to populate Hackensack the way we treat them. Why worry? And thank you, Leo, for doing something about it. And that's, please, get us a crossing guard, and let the people around there shovel a path off the street.
Was it a residential house that wasn't shoved?
I have no idea.
Corner, was it a commercial property?
One was, this was commercial, the guard was commercial in the corner, and then one was a residential. There was one in each.
Okay.
Next, please.
Can I just answer?
Sure.
In regards to her complaint about having a crossing guard positioned at Munaki and Hudson, is that, I've already spoken to the Board of Education, I spoke to the acting superintendent, I've spoken to the Traffic Bureau, Sergeant O'Connor. The one thing that you have to appreciate, that, one, there's a cost to these, and I'm not saying that the cost of a crossing guard supersedes what our responsibility of keeping these children safe. So I'm waiting for the results of this to come back. I asked the superintendent, is there a need, and how many children cross that intersection?
One child like this worked more than six crossing guards.
I, I would respectfully ask you, let me finish. So when I have this information, I will supply that. I don't know if you have forgotten, but my background has been law enforcement for twenty-eight years, I value this. But you also have to understand, there's a cost associated to this. I don't know if these children are delivered, I don't know if that was a one-time event, I understand your concerns for that, but we have forty-eight thousand people in lots of intersections. So I'm just trying to make sure that we make the right decision. The other thing is, this incident that you referred to, to my knowledge, has only occurred once. So I don't know that that was a one-time event, or this happens with frequency. But the once, the minute the city places somebody there as a crossing guard, they're there. Because unless there's an, an engineering change, and, and our traffic gentleman, John Jar, has pointed out, once they're there, they're there. You don't remove them unless you re-engineer the intersection. In regards to the gas station, I think is what you referred to, didn't shovel a path, we can go back and cite these people, but there is no sidewalk there, because there's just macadam, and it's all busted up. I went up there, you're well aware that I went there, there's no sidewalks in place there, so I, I'm sure that what the gentleman's response is going to be, I plowed my parking lot, there is no sidewalk there.
It's a direct, well, public right-of-way, it's an avenue.
I, I'm well aware that there's a public, once again, I would ask you, let me finish.
Please let the city manager
We will go back and look at this, but you have to remember, the city of Hackensack, in certain locations, does not have the appropriate or proper sidewalk or passage. So these are all things that are part of engineering, the enforcement and the education. You folks all just apparently, at the last minute, think that I have a magic wand, I can just make all of these happen. That condition has been there for decades.
Public right-of-way, it's designed for no walking, so it gives
Mrs. Salvo, I'm well aware
Please, please, no back and forth.
So, I am working on this, but as all of these projects, there is just not, it's instantaneously, because it doesn't work that way.
Please, please, the city manager has stated his point, he's, he's, I'm speechless.
Paul.
Paul, come on. Paul, please.
Good evening, Paul Nichols. Happy New Year, everybody.
Same to you, sir.
I have some stuff I want to finish up from last year, it was, first of all, this is, you all may have seen him on Hudson Street, Steve Sullivan. He was one of our friends that was homeless. He died on the street.
Sorry to hear that, sir.
Yeah, we have to
When was this?
This was new, uh, Christmas Eve, Christmas Eve.
In Hackensack?
You all knew him. Yeah.
What was his name?
Steve Sullivan. Here, you can have the
This happened in Hackensack?
Yeah, yeah, it did. Now, it's, I'm just really saying this, because, you know, I'm obviously upset about what happened, but I'm very grateful for this code blue. This was right before code blue, and there really wasn't a need, I had nothing to do with it. The cops did a wonderful job over the summer, trying to help them. It's really the state's, a state, I blame the state, I blame the state. But the reason, another reason why I show this is because of how important code blue is. And I want to publicly thank the police department for going above and beyond and trying to help these people get to shelter. You know, because the way I look at it is, with this code blue thing, and I know you guys are heavily involved now, is that two-six-two, when you call two-six-two for a mental health crisis, one of the criteria is, they're going to hear in the words you say if the person is in danger of hurting themselves or others. Now, if a person's homeless and in this negative thirty degrees, they're obviously in danger of themselves. So that's another route that people can go, but I think that's, you know, it's, it's really tragic, and I think everybody, you know, this is the county seat, so, and we do work really well with the, the shelter and everything, but I think more things need to be done. But again, I am very grateful for having code blue throughout the state now. And that brings me to my next thing. That was pretty much just a rant, you know, but I, I mean, it's just very upsetting that anybody would die out here, you know, not getting help. But just a reminder, Project Homeless Connect, it's not only for homeless, for anybody in the community that needs something, can go over there, to the Housing, Health and Human Service Center. I've already given you one, but I'll give you another, this is where I'm needed. Thank you for posting it. And again, this winter, I have a feeling it's going to be really rough. So this really cold weather is, even people that might, you know, lose their heat or have an emergency, should really search out code blue, too. So thank you very much, happy new year.
Yep.
And the state three, state three, state street thing is really cool.
It is cool.
So I'm lucky to say that I'm too young to remember it when it was two ways before. I don't ever remember that, but it was great.
Take a blast from the past.
Yes. Thanks.
Next, please. Seeing none, motion to close.
Offer.
Need a second, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canestrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims?
Aye.
Councilmember Pataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrus?
Aye. Okay, Mrs. Von Rudenberg?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I want to start out by thanking the sanitation department. They did a really great job with the snow removal. It was really cold out there. It, you know, snowed pretty quickly, so they, from what I saw, they did a really great job. Mr. Nichols, I'm sorry for the loss of your friend. Thank goodness for code blue, especially in this weather. I mean, who would imagine? I don't think they've seen this weather in a very long time around here. So it, it's pretty rough out there. Congratulations to, well, we're going to miss him, but congratulate Mr. Sadida on his retirement. He was a really, really great man, a good person. We're going to miss him, he was just a wonderful person. And just a little side story, on Friday, after a long week of having all the kids home from school, being trapped in the house, it was so cold, I decided to take them to go see the tree in New York. It was impromptu, by myself, my husband thought I was crazy, I didn't tell him till we were on our way there, and got on the, on the ferry, and on the way home, there's a really nice family that I, I met, I guess he saw that I was struggling with the three kids in a stroller in the cold, and he was asking, you know, where are you guys from? The mom was asking, and I said Hackensack. And they said, wow, you know, we, we're hearing a lot about Hackensack, they're from Ocean County, and, and, you know, you know, good things going on there, and there's a lot of restaurants popping up, and, you know, it made me really proud to be a part of Hackensack, and it was just a nice, you know, a nice thing to hear. And it was a, you know, another young family, and they said they had a friend that was looking to move here, and, you know, young families that want to come in and, and be here, and want to be part of a, you know, a nice town, a diverse town, a town with, you know, a lot to offer. So it was, you know, it was just a nice feeling. And that's about it. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steph. I'd like to wish everyone here, and everyone out watching this, on, on the internet or on TV, a very, very happy new year. We look forward to, we had a great 2017 here in the city of Hackensack, and we look to even better and better things happening in, in 2018, thanks to the support of all the residents in the city, and all the wonderful employees that we have here in the city. At the committee, the whole meeting, we celebrated the inauguration of a new fire deputy chief, so again, congratulations out to Deputy Chief Enzianata, another fine young man who's, you know, put in his time here in the city, and done a wonderful job, and nice to again see folks move through the ranks and, and achieve such nice accomplishments. Tony Sadida, what do you say about someone like Tony Sadida? I mean, twenty-nine years of distinguished service for the city of Hackensack. I don't think I've met a person that has not liked or had something good to say about Mr. Sadida. I mean, he will be sorely missed in the city, not only for his wonderful work ethic and his many accomplishments, but for the knowledge that he's had of the city, the ins and outs of how things work. And we wished him well at his retirement, here, little, little event that we had here at the city, and I want to, you know, again acknowledge that, that outstanding service that, that he provided for the city. Couple of the departments to thank, I, I agree, thanks to, you know, the DPW for the snow, and I also think that it paid off that they did some of the early work. You know, they went out before the storm and, and, you know, put some solutions on the road, and I think that that, you know, you could see an improvement, and I think that that helped, and hopefully will continue to do that if we have, hopefully not a lot more storms, but any other snow, you know, throughout the rest of the winter. I also want to extend the thanks to all the folks that work so diligently in the tax collector's office. I think we closed out the year very successfully there, and again, kudos to them for all their hard work, and, you know, for really closing the year out the way it should be, very, 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 very good accomplishment. And finally, Two Way Street on State Street. I mean, I do, who said that they were too young to remember? Paul, okay? I, I remember driving Main Street Hackensack and State Street Hackensack two ways, and it's very exciting to see that coming back, and I think that it, it's going to be, you know, a wonderful support for our downtown. It won't be a, a quick one-way out of town anymore. It, you know, it will slow down traffic on Main Street, definitely benefit the, the many businesses that we have on Main Street, and I think it, it's just going to be, you know, great to, to, to see that, and to get the buses off, off of Main Street. I think, you know, we survived it many, many years ago with buses, and with pretty big cars, you know, the big Cadillacs and the big Buicks of those yesteryears when this was happening. So I don't anticipate that we're going to have problems. I think that we've tried to think of a lot of ways to alleviate traffic issues. One, removing the buses. Two, having any on-street deliveries be done early before business hours. And third, having tandem parking. So there will be a change to the way that you park on Main Street. You'll never have to parallel park, so to speak, backing in. If you're familiar with, I think they have it in Westwood, where there's like a designated striped area, so you can just pull into your space and back up. So I think all of those things will also help make it a much smoother transition. So again, thanks to the folks that made Two Way State Street happen, and look forward to Main Street. Have a great night, everyone.
I want to say thank you to Tony Sadida for twenty-nine years of service to the city of Hackensack. You'll never be forgotten. Wrestling and Hackensack junior basketball started this week. We had over six hundred kids participate. It was a great start to the winter sports season. To the DPW, I want to commend you on the great job you did with the snow, and you continually cleaned up. I want to thank Cherry Pond on Sussex Street for feeding our DPW workers, our police officers with warm coffee and soup. We really appreciate it. This weekend, during the snowstorm, Jerome Pemberton passed away shoveling snow. Jerome was on a planning board for the city of Hackensack for eight years. And he passed away. And we're going to have his services Friday at 6:00 PM at Trinity Baptist Church. If you don't mind, we can have just a moment of silence for him, I appreciate it. Thank you.
First of all, you know, Happy New Year to everybody. I hope so 2018 is going to be better than 2017. As everybody know, we got the Code Blue effective from two, three weeks in December. I already look like I give you good results to the poor people in the streets. And the State Street conversion was really good. Look like everything is moving the right way. And there's going to be a few more changes here and there to try to do better. Related to the M&amp;M Building, that project is not a million cat, it's only 5.6. And then whatever modification we have to make, that was recommended by the planning board. And we try to work together. So I think it's going to be a beautiful project that is going to help the kids. And congratulations to the deputy chief, Annunziata. Think he deserved that position, he was here for a long time. DPW really did a good job with the removal of the snow. And it's no question that Tony Sadida was a good employer. I don't believe there's one person in the city that never was in touch with Tony. Anytime that you need anything in the city, Tony was right there. I disagree with the comments from the record of the newspaper. They should be fine now. They're really true, the whole thing, before they were going to put something like that in the newspaper. And thank to Pablo, the guy that owns Cherry Pond that provide coffee and soups to the DPW guys and to the police department. Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you. Like to offer my condolences to the Pemberton family. They're a long, longtime Hackensack family, have been around forever. Sad day when that happened. And also to Steve Sullivan, Paul's friend. You know, this weather, especially the weather we've had the last two weeks. I mean, yesterday was first day wind above freezing since Christmas Day. It was, it's just been brutal. And, yeah, just imagine, go outside one day when it's like that, when it's five degrees or 10 degrees outside, and stand out there, maybe not dressed properly, for five minutes. And then imagine being out there all night. It's just, I can't imagine. So it's so important for this Code Blue to be effective and get these people off. And this doesn't just mean city employees or your police department, your fire department, it means the whole city. If you see somebody in distress that you, you know, they're out there in the cold shivering, make the call. Put them in your car, do whatever you have to do. They're human beings. We got to, you know, we got to take care of each other. And this is, yeah, it's tough on these folks that are out on the streets. It's not easy. The two-way conversion, some people love it, some people don't. It seems that people, people who remember it love it. And, you know, I get a lot of questions, "Why did you do it?" It's very important for the whole process of redevelopment. The redevelopment would not even happen if it wasn't for the conversion of two-way streets of State Street and Main Street. The developers actually said they would not even entertain buildings here if we didn't change the streets around. And, you know, I've kind of expressed myself this way. If the one-way streets are so good, why isn't Ridgewood one way? Why isn't Montclair one way? Why isn't all the other successful downtowns one way? They're not. And that's for a reason. Immigration, Chris, I can't disagree with you more, you know? Our police should not be, they are not paid to be ICE agents. I will fight as much as I can to see that they never do. They have enough work to do as police officers for the city of Hackensack without having to even think of enforcing something like that. Totally disagree with you on that. Snow and cars. I'm going to be a little, might be a little harsh here and sound a little harsh here, but this is out to the public. You know, we have not fully enforced the towing of cars and ticketing of cars on our snow routes throughout the city. And unfortunately, what it does, as good as a job as our DPW does, if they can't get these cars off the street, they can't do their job. And we can't get plowed curb to curb unless you move your car. So moving forward, and I'm going to sit, push with the city manager on this, and I think the rest of the council is going to back me, we are going to start ticketing and towing your cars if you're parked on a snow route if we get snowfall of four inches. So, and it's the only way to do it. But we are going to come up with a plan where you can use city lots to park your cars. We'll do everything we can to help you. But we cannot properly plow these streets with your cars parked there. And, you know, it's almost like people just brush it off because it's, nobody was penalized or ticketed for years or towed. And we did tow about 25 to 30 cars with the storm. And we wrote about 150 to 175 tickets. But that's just a drop in the bucket because I guarantee there's probably about 500 cars parked out there that shouldn't be parked out there. I drive, I drive around, I get in the car, I look, I'm like, these people are unbelievable, they just don't move their cars. So be warned, residents, being fair. You're on a snow route, it's a snow route, it's designated a snow route for a reason, usually for emergency vehicle use and other things, so they can get through, to cut through the city. So you will be towed and you will be ticketed at the next snowstorm if you don't move your car. We will have a plan in effect, though, I understand.
Yep.
Tony Sadida, you know, that article, I got to tell you, that the headline, when I saw the headline in that article, heard that headline at 5:30 this morning, 6 o'clock this morning, I was just, just totally dumbfounded. They do what they call on the internet now, clickbait's. And that's a, some, you know, outlandish, like National Enquirer-type headline that gets you to look at it and it gets you to click on it, right? And guess what? There's a count of how many people click on it. And the reporter gets kudos for how many clicks they get. And, you know, to take a man like this who's, you know, given so much time to the city and has been a stellar, stellar employee as far as I'm concerned, and just because somebody files a lawsuit on you, doesn't make it so. But when a headline goes out there like that, it makes it so. And that's unfair to that man. And to me, I thought it was disgraceful. You know, I'm not saying there's not some facts in the article, but to get to the article, the actual headline was very, very wrong and very misleading about him. And that money that we're talking about, let me tell you something. He's entitled to that money, whether he was guilty of something. That's his, that was his time. And he left, I think, about 200 hours of time on the table that he didn't even take. He didn't even take it. So he was entitled to that payout. He deserves that payout, and he shall receive that payout. The crossing guard at the St. Francis Church that we put there. Now, so basically what I'm hearing now is they're in more danger now with the crossing guard there than before there was a crossing guard? Is that what I'm hearing? I'm speaking, please. What I'm saying is, how did they cross the street before? Because the building was there before, the street was there before, the school was there before. So I have to think that with one of our crossing guards there, it's safer. I would have to think. And if we need to tune up our crossing guard a little bit so they're doing a little better job, we shall do so. Towing of cars, again, I spoke about that, we need to work on that. I want to thank or congratulate Deputy Chief Anunziata. I've actually had the privilege of working with Anunziata at a professional level. And I can tell you, he always has the safety of the city, his firemen, residents, commercial property owners, in his best interest. And, you know, Chief Freeman made a key point that there's two or three people in the city as far as from the fire department that nobody ever wants to see, and that's your fire officials. Because they're the guys who enforce things that sometimes you don't, you know, might not want enforced, but it's for everybody's own safety. And he knows the rules. I know he knows the rules because I've seen him in action, and he does a wonderful job. So congratulations to him. Everybody enjoy the next heat wave? Oh, Martin Luther King service Monday at Mount Olive, 12 o'clock, all right? For everybody who can make it. It's a wonderful ceremony. And Happy New Year to everyone, get home safely. Thank you. Motion to close?
Offer.